What is this?
Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Here we are. Ms. Base Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Brown.
Present.
Eight council members present.
And we have Pastor Williamson here to lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we deeply grateful for the beautiful spring day that you've given us and for the privilege we've had, all of us, to live it and do our work in our community. Notwithstanding, Lord, this is session night, so I pray your blessings over discussions already held and the ensuing meeting. I pray, Lord, for the public that's here to participate. It's a blessing to see all the folks from our community represent their specific interests and meet with the council and our city government. I continue to pray for those that are connected to the city family. That would include Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu. And I pray, Lord, as well, for Chief Kofelt and his mother, Pat. Anyone else that I should mention, Lord, you add to the list by your own power and strength, and we'll all be grateful. Lead the session tonight, Lord. Please guide it in any discussions held and any decisions that are made. All of us agree and pray that they'll be pleasing first to you and then to the people that we serve. We thank you for all this, in Christ's name. Amen. Place the flag. Attention, salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. So at this time, we've got some visitors from the Housing Authority who've got a proclamation to present. So proclamation of recognition and appreciation, whereas the Fulton Housing Authority was formed in 1959 after the late Mayor Frank Hensley's initiative to clear blighted areas of land in order to build public housing units for low-income families, was authorized by the Fulton City Council. And whereas, five commissioners were appointed to oversee the functions of the newly-formed Housing Authority, John C. Harris, A.R. Lawn, E.L. Scott, V.A. Johnson, Jr., and Homer Larson. And the first official meeting of the Housing Authority was held May 7, 1959. And whereas, throughout its 60 years of existence, the Fulton Housing Authority has provided housing assistance to countless families and individuals in the Fulton community, including those currently residing in the 200 units managed by the organization. And now, therefore, I allow, canal Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere congratulations in honor of the 60th anniversary of the Fulton Housing Authority. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Fulton, Missouri, this 14th day of May, 2019.
This evening, I have came Julie Boyd Gules, who is the Vice Chair of the Commission for the Housing Authority, Denise Spelt, who is another Commissioner, and Deb Grums, who is a staff member. We would all just like to say thank you very much for this honor and recognition. And we hope that the current City Council will be as supportive and helpful in ensuring that we have safe and affordable housing in this community for all of the residents and citizens, as our forefathers were doing this 60 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have comments for visitors. So if you would state your name and your address and fire away.
Almarin Nelson. My address is 3212 Nicholas Court, Fulton. And I am from the Fulton Street Fair. And this year, the Fulton Street Fair Committee would like to invite the City of Fulton to be our Grand Marshal and the Street Fair for the grand parade. All employees and family members are welcome to participate. The Grand Marshal will allow us to showcase the employees and recognize all the hard work that the City of Fulton helps us do for the Street Fair. We just really want to say thank you. We know how much work goes into the Street Fair, and we know that we couldn't do it without you guys. So I have a formal invitation here for you, and we would really love for you to participate.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're really excited. We'd really like for you to carry the large flag, put a float in the parade.
That's a big one.
It takes about 25 people to do it. So it's, you know, really not that many, but we would like all of you to participate as well. You can walk, you can ride, however you'd like. So we're really excited. Could I get this to?
I'll take it, and we'll get copies made. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fantastic idea.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Wow.
Just let you know, the mayor announced this at the city picnic last Friday night.
Yes.
And the employees cheered and clapped and were very excited about the honor and the privilege.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other visitors that would like to come in? State your name, please, and address.
My name is Sam Craighead, and I'm with the America's National Churchill Museum. And I'm here to say thank you, because I was here back in January asking several things of you, all of which you granted. The first was important. It was a proclamation to a young man from Fulton who died in 1943. He was a member of the Eagle Squadron of the Royal Air Force, and then he was a member of the United States Army Air Force. And he lost his life on May 4, 1943. And you were kind enough to declare May 4, 2019, John Frederick Lutz Day in Fulton. And I thank you for that. Also, the mayor graciously brought greetings at one of our dinners, and he did it very well. And it's on our website now. You can watch the video of it. We also like to thank you for allowing us to go north on Court Street during the parade. That has been done twice since it's been one-way, and that was at the original dedication on May 7, 1969, and then on May 4, 2019. Mr. Tim Riley, who is Director of the Museum, wanted me to extend his thanks, as well as that of the President of the College, Fletcher Lampkin, and our honorary committee, which included co-chair Governor Mike Parson, to let you know that we hosted more than 1,500 people, and many more were there for the parade, and for Fulton being such a gracious host. Fulton is one of the reasons our membership is up 27% in the last two years. Fulton is the reason more than 4,000 of our youngest citizens participated in the Special Relationship Project, which is still on display at the museum, and we invite you to come see it if you haven't. Fulton is a town with big ideas. We are proud to play our part in welcoming the world to our community. As Winston Churchill said, now is, this is not the end. It is not even the beginning of the end, but it is perhaps the end of the beginning. We want to invite you, your families, to come to the museum and anytime you'd like. And again, we say thank you for helping us so much with this project.
Great turnout. Like you said, go to the museum. If you haven't been for a few years or, like me, many years, it's really cool.
And if you didn't see the parade, the mayor was in a Jeep.
Yeah.
Along with our RAF pilot.
Felt like I was in an episode of MASH. Pretty cool.
But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other visitors? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's kind of a stringent format we have to do, so I'll read as follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and then three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor. If you want to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address. So the hearing is now declared open. The item in question is for the purpose of rezoning the following tracts of land, a .64 acre tract of land located immediately south of 2515 North Bluff Street in Fulton, Missouri, from its present zoning of C3 plan commercial to C2 commercial. Issue the first call. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter?
My name's Tyler Rieke. I'm representing 2521 North Bluff Street, which is home to the Coalition Against Rape and Domestic Violence here in Fulton. For those of you who aren't aware of us, you might know us by our shorter name, which is Card V. In 2018, we served 433 individual victims of domestic and sexual violence here in the Callaway County community with comprehensive, free, and confidential services related to their victimizations. We've been at our current location for over 10 years, which is located directly behind the lot in question. We are required by law to provide our services confidentially. So we're here just to speak out that we're not in support of the building of additional multi-level and multifamily apartment complexes in our immediate side yard due to our need to provide confidential services. We have a unique location that does, we're kind of hidden from the main view. Our parking lot's pretty well concealed, as is our backyard area, just to provide confidential services to survivors often in the most challenging parts of their lives. And we have a great secluded area, so we just wanted to speak out against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Third call. Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one come, there will be three calls now issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Second call. And third call. Public hearing is now closed, and we'll return to our regular agenda. Up next for discussion is the approval of the consent agenda. We do have one item that was pulled out. Approval of an event request from Lindai Camp for the annual Callaway County Crop Hunger Walk on Sunday, October 13, 2019, at 1:30 p.m. The event request has been reviewed and approved by Chief Myers, and no police assistance is needed or requested. So we've pulled that off. Does that mean we need a motion and second to approve that?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There we go.
Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call the question all in favor.
Yes.
May I oppose? That passes. Are there any other items in the consent agenda that anyone had questions about, concerns? So we'll move on. Or do we need to get that approved, the consent agenda?
We actually, so we're able to just approve everything, and since there's only one thing on there tonight, we're good to go. We got that one approved.
Gotcha. Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I know you're getting ready to go into unfinished business. I do have an unfinished business item I'd like to bring up.
Proceed.
I'd like to know, we've been talking about the Community Center and the ball fields, and I'd like some update on what's going on with it.
We just finished up, well, we've been finished for a little while on the design process for the Community Center. The architects and our engineering department have just wrapped up the construction documents. So I think this week, sometime, they're going to go to Dennis to get all the necessary permits, and then we'll be ready to put that out for bid. So that's very close to being finalized. The baseball complex, engineering still has a little work to do on the design of it. They should be done with that fairly soon, and I think we're going to probably put that out to bid in pieces, because we think we can get a better price if we do the dirt work separately, the fences separately, things like that. So we're working through that, trying to figure all that out, but we're very, very close to getting everything out for bid.
Thoughts on an actual timeline?
What's that?
Thoughts on a timeline?
I'm hoping in the next week or two. If the council's ready to move on it, we can bring it back at the next council meeting or we can decide tonight. I mean, that's up to you guys. I think we're, by the end of the week, we'll be ready to go.
I would prefer that it not be the next meeting, if it was my choice, as we will be missing one member.
Actually, why can't we just go ahead and do it this evening? All we're doing is asking for it to go off for a bid.
I'm okay with that.
So I'd like to make a motion. We just go ahead and send this results off for a bid.
Second.
And I actually think you guys have already made a couple motions a few times for us to go ahead and take it to bid, right? So I think, I mean, not that we can't do that motion, but I believe we have multiple motions to take it to bid, so we should be okay.
Unless you specifically need something. I don't. Unless, like I said, if we're ready to go to bid, I mean, there's some things within the city that we got to work through and talk about before we actually put it out. But like I said, we're very, very close to having it finalized. At the next meeting, I can bring you some of the concept drawings and the pictures that the architect's been providing us, and let you take a look at what it's going to look like.
When do you think you'll be able to give us final cost numbers?
Architect's saying probably six to eight weeks on the bid process. So that's kind of normal. We'll have, we'll put it out for bid. Somewhere in there, we'll have a pre-bid meeting where we meet with the contractors, kind of answer any questions. And then, probably about six to eight weeks, the bids will be back. Any other questions?
Keep it moving, please.
I'm trying. I'm trying.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I like the fact that you're doing the ball field maybe in segments to see what can or cannot be done, considering the fact that we don't know what the community centers are going to cost, because that may change everything, so. So do we need to cancel that motion on the floor, Courtney?
If you all would like to vote on it.
I think we've got a couple of new members since the last time we voted, so let's just go ahead and do a vote.
I agree.
So we're still hoping for discussion if anyone has more to ask or...
Yes. I'm going to vote no on this, because I still think that unless you pull one of them off, because I get asked people asking questions, it's been three years of the net and that, and for some reason out there, everyone thinks they're getting the community building, baseball fields, all at the same time.
That's the way it was sold. That's the way it was asked and voted on.
Actually, there was a third item.
That's just my input, so that's what I'm telling you. I'm going to vote no on it. Let me go out to bid.
Anybody else? I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
May I oppose?
No.
I believe that passed. We have one no and seven yeses. Moving on. No more unfinished business. New business. Julia Boyd Gules will be here to present, or to, yeah, to request permission for the annual Relay for Life. I see her in the audience.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Julie Gules.
Sarah Sax.
And Cindy Beckmeyer.
We're the tri-chairs for this year's Relay for Life, and we submitted an proposal. It will likely be held on June 14. The theme is salute to a cure, since that is what we do. Do you have any questions for us? We'd be very proud of all of us last year at the memorial.
You've asked for Second Street to be closed. Have you talked to the two businesses that front Second Street, the copper mine and the liquor store?
Well, I have spoken with Copper Mine. They are aware of it, not the liquor store.
Okay. So they're not concerned, or don't have a lot of concerns?
They were happy that we let them know.
Okay.
Yes. They will, they're planning to just be kind of aware that they may need to tell people as they're, you know, trying to come into the parking lot, you know, are you coming into our business this evening, or relay parking elsewhere. So they were very appreciative that we gave my heads up.
Okay, so you're going to stop at Nichols? Is that right?
Yeah.
So you can get to the Copper Mine from the other direction?
Yes.
Okay. Since that's a one-way street?
Either way.
Yeah.
They can come down.
They can come down.
Or go in.
Okay. Thank you.
This will only be during the Luminaries.
Which is what kind of timeframe?
Oh, it's not the whole night?
No.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
An hour?
Probably less. Last year was about 30, 40 minutes. The Luminaries ceremony will be approximately 9:00 p.m. Depending on how dark it is, we'll wait until it's dark enough to light all the candles.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
I do have one. Have we not talked recently about food trucks? And I understand there maybe was food trucks last year.
That is correct.
But we, as the City Council, have discussed food trucks and what should and shouldn't happen. And I think that's something that we just need to, if we're making exception for them, do we make an exception for everyone going forward with the food trucks?
I think that is, that's a valid point. Typically, when someone specifies in their request that they're going to have food trucks, that's obviously something you guys, that's part of this request, who you're going to be voting on allowing those food trucks for this event. So we do treat it a little differently, because you are specifically looking at each request and granting permission. But yes, we are still looking at our food trucks, getting something for food trucks.
In this instance, the food trucks is a part of this organization's request? The discussion that we need to come up with as a council is decide what we do about a food truck that just wants to go on the street on their own?
That's, I'm not opposed to it at all by any means, but I just don't want to get ourselves in a situation where, well, you let Relay for Life do it, why can't we do it?
Understood.
Yeah, we get ourselves in enough of those situations.
That's the only question I had.
And so the park, I'm telling you, the actual park part of it, not just the pavilion, but we're going to, we're going to close the park to the public in terms of park use? What's that timeframe?
All we did last year was around, I think, 11:00 a.m. We put the wooden block gates up to block cars from parking in the parking lot, so that when we started the event, there would be room for the car show. There would be a whole bunch of people parked in that park. Parked the food trucks in there, the cars, and then we did allow for some handicap parking within that, yes. There were tons of families there when we started that were at the splash pad. It was a really hot day last year, so. And it actually helped us. They don't charge anything for anybody to actually physically be in the park. It's just if they want to play games or something of that nature. But as far as use of the park in terms of splash pad and using the playground, they're perfectly welcome to do so.
More the merrier.
Yeah, absolutely. We encourage parking at the Hensley Field Park. There's a little bit of a walk, but it works.
Okay.
All right, so you have a motion and a second. I'm sorry.
Do we need to be on the rider, the insurance rider? Does the city need to?
They've requested that, and we have done that.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that? I'll call for the questions.
Thank you for what you guys do. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Cool.
It's a good weather.
Yeah, hopefully.
So now we have Dick Davis here to talk about fireworks. Welcome, cousin.
Mr. Mayor. Hi, my name is Dick Davis, and I appreciate having a few moments of your time. I'm here representing Fulton Country Club. This evening is the president of the board of the Country Club, my first year serving in that capacity. The Fulton Country Club has a rich history, heritage, and tradition, having been here since it was founded in 1917. Part of the tradition that has grown there is the... Part of the tradition that has grown there is the Fourth of July fireworks display, which over the years has become more expensive for the club to host, and, uh, at some point in the past, I'm not sure when, the city was generous enough to start helping us with half of the cost. Back in the day, that we could buy fireworks for a few hundred dollars, and some of our younger members would set them off themselves, uh, we were able to fund it, but now as you need professional fire technicians, and the cost of fireworks continues to escalate, it's becoming harder and harder for us to, uh, to be able to afford that. The, the club is surviving, and we have a new catering manager, and we're doing some work as the board to, uh, to revitalize the club and, and focus on events and getting renewed participation by members, and also with the new catering manager, uh, some opportunities for hosting, class reunions, wedding receptions, and some other things that will help us to direct some income, as well as some new membership opportunities that we're making available for people to belong to the club. Um, to get down to the, uh, the deal, our fireworks are fifty-nine hundred dollars this year, the same as they were last year. So my understanding is the, the city participated, uh, at two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars last year, and what I would like to request is for that level of participation, but we need more, we're just not financially able this year to stand the whole other half, and if we could request three thousand nine hundred and fifty, an extra thousand this year, I, I'm hopeful that going forward, we'll be able to maybe resume the half deal going forward. But I've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, trying to secure some additional funding from them. They don't really have funding available, but they've been kind enough to offer to help us solicit donations from the business community and from the chamber members. So, uh, so if the, if we can get some help from the city and from the chamber and the business community, and the club can stand the balance of it, we feel of, cause that's gonna be a, an unknown figure, depending on how much support we get from, from the business community. But, uh, you know, with the location of the club right next to Veterans Park, it provides an opportunity for the community at large to enjoy the fireworks display with some parking and some seating for viewing of the fireworks there, so we'd like to continue the tradition, we just need a little bit extra help this year with it. So, uh, the contract is with J and M Displays out of Iowa, the city will be named, uh, they provide insurance, the city will be named insured on that policy, and, uh, our contract calls for a discount if we can pay it by June the fourth, one month prior to the display, and the discount is not in form of a cash discount, but it's in form of additional fireworks, so we'll get eight percent more fireworks if we can pay it by June fourth. So my request from the city is for three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars this year for, uh, participation in the Fulton Country Club fireworks display.
Mr. Davis, what would the impact be to reduce the total cost by a thousand dollars? Rather than increasing our share by a thousand if we simply went with a forty-nine hundred dollar display?
Uh, well, obviously, I, my first reaction is that there would be less fireworks, so.
Twenty percent.
Yeah.
So I don't know how long the display typically lasts, thirty or forty minutes, so it might shorten it to twenty, twenty-five minutes, I, I don't know.
I just didn't know if that was, if that was examined or not, as part of the conversation?
We've already, we've already kinda negotiated the, the contract for this year, so I don't know if I could, I might be able to go back to them and say, hey, this is, you know, we wanna look at a different number, a different display. I'm not sure if that's, uh, available at this point in time. We're, we're getting a little bit close to the time that they need the, the full payment for that, so.
I certainly think that many in the community benefit from the fireworks and not just the, the country club. Um, since I've lived in town, my wife insists that's the only holiday that, that does not float for us at my house, and we sit in the exact same spot every year, so I would be one hundred percent okay with the additional thousand dollars, and I would make a motion that we grant them thirty-nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, okay.
I have a motion in a second. Steve, did you have something to say, sir?
No, that's, that's gonna go wrong with him.
Fantastic.
He made the motion, I'll second it.
Are there any more questions on this?
I, I-
Go ahead.
Over here.
No, go ahead.
You had mentioned that you were soliciting donations from the community with the help of the chamber.
Yes.
You need the money in roughly two and a half weeks to get this additional eight percent on top of.
Right.
Okay, um, so what if that doesn't come through? Is, what would happen at that point if you don't have, um, the additional funds, if, if they're not coming in, and now we're getting close to the fourth?
I'll, I'll be able to tell you a little bit more after you guys vote. But, uh, the club, the club is figuring on, on probably standing off about a thousand dollars of, of this.
Okay, so there is some stability there with-
So we're hoping we might be able to raise a thousand from, from the, uh, from the business community, but, you know, in the interim, if we need to pay the bill by June the fourth, and all the checks haven't come in from the business community, I think we can stand that for, until the checks do come in.
Okay.
And this would be a one-time request, you're hoping that next year you can be back down to half?
Yes, that is-
And if the donations exceed the requirements, it'll come off our thirty-nine.
It'll go towards next year.
Hang on now.
The, the solicitation from the chamber has been out there for a while, I can tell you the checks haven't been flooding in yet, but, uh, our fingers are crossed.
Understood.
We appreciate all that you, you guys do to put this together, I know it's, uh, probably more of a headache than, than you get a benefit out of it, I'm sure.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, that fifty-nine hundred has been the last several years was the, the, has been the amount for the, uh, when I asked last year, I was thinking it was the last three years, it was fifty-nine hundred, so it hasn't gone up at all.
I'm, I'm pretty amazed.
One of the very few things in life that hasn't.
Right, so, so we're just working on the club end of it to try to get the club in better financial condition, so we'll be able to stand that fight next time.
Mr. Simmons?
I'm a member of the country club.
You do not have, you do not have a personal financial interest in this vote?
Yeah, I kinda do, cause we're increasing the amount of money, yeah, I don't have a personal interest, but-
But I don't think you do, Ballard, I think the community is, is benefits enough from, in my opinion, the community benefits enough from it that I don't think it should be an issue.
You were talking about abstaining from the vote?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's your choice, if you wanna do that, you can do that.
It's your choice.
I'm more comfortable doing that.
That's fine. So if there's no more discussion, should we call for the vote, all those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Those opposed? We got it.
Thank you very much.
And one abstain, yep.
Appreciate, appreciate your support, thank you.
Look forward to it.
Moving on, um, Ann Langendorfer is here to present for our Cleewood Block Party, slash ice cream, so we don't wanna forget that part.
Well, just so you know, I'm not actually Ann Langendorfer, I'm Lisa McDaniel, so Ann wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'm here, I've got my little junior community members over there, but the Cleewood community would like to host a block party, and would like to close off the north end of School Street, just so that we can have a functional place to gather as a neighborhood community. Um, it would not affect any of the neighbors, there are no businesses there, it's just the park side, so we wanted to be able to have some barriers there to prohibit traffic, just because we do have so many young children who live in our community. Um, it would be an alcohol-free event, it's ice cream, you're more than welcome to attend if you would like to, and, uh, we would like to do this on May the twenty-fifth, from four to six p.m., with a possible rain date of June eighth, and so we were here to ask for your permission.
That is a divided road, correct? There, there's-
Yes, it is a divided road, so traffic could still go through, and no one is affected in a negative way.
Oh, yeah, that's a perfect street club.
It's, it's gonna be good.
Motion to approve.
Second. Lots of seconds.
Well, then we'll see you there, so thank you so much.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Alright.
Thank you so very much.
Now we have Nathan Nicholas here from Lauper Municipal Law to present, uh, provide an overview of our medical marijuana regulations.
Huh?
How long do you want me to?
Just start.
I'll give you a buzzword or something.
Exactly.
Miss, how long do we want, you know? Or do we need you to?
Ten minutes.
We're gonna have to talk about this a lot more.
I, I can talk for hours.
Five, five to ten minutes?
No, 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 that's not, you're not gonna hear them.
Be more than that.
It'll be half an hour?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Let's say fifteen, and then if you overshoot, go you, but.
Just give me the high sign if I've gone on.
I certainly don't think it's all gonna be resolved tonight by any means.
No, I guarantee you that it will not. So, uh, yeah, my name is Nathan Nicholas, I'm with Lauper Municipal Law, we're a law firm, uh, my office in, is in Jefferson City, we represent nothing but cities, so my interest here is just in, in representing cities. Bill asked me to come and speak to you all, because we have been working with a number of different cities, uh, talking about these medical marijuana, marijuana issues, and what cities need to do to address this issue, and, uh, he thought it might be useful for you all to hear some of our thoughts on that, on that subject. And I, I guess the bottom line I would tell you is, when that Amendment Two passed, reality as we know it changed. You know, we had a lot of things that, uh, that changed just because marijuana was always illegal, and so we didn't have to worry about a lot of different things, but different aspects about marijuana, it was just illegal. Uh, now it's not, and, you know, a lot of things need to change. What you hear so much is zoning, and I'll talk a little bit about zoning, but I also want you to kind of think about some of the other issues, because what I like to tell cities is zoning is just the tip of the iceberg, it's probably the smallest piece that you really need to address in all of this. So, um, just to kinda, kinda launch in, and I'm assuming that you all have sort of a basic knowledge, but I'll just kinda cover some of the basics. Um, Amendment Two does allow cities to regulate reasonable time, place and manner of medical marijuana, particularly the medical marijuana facilities. There are five types of medical marijuana facilities, four really, but technically five. You have the dispensaries, that's where you would go to buy your medical marijuana, you have cultivation facilities where they grow the marijuana, they have manufacturing facilities where they take the marijuana and make it into gummy bears or cookies, and apparently also, weirdly enough, um, patches, like, you know, like your anti-smoking patches, you get those in marijuana, and suppositories, I, I don't even know why, um, but there are a lot of different things that are made in those manufacturing facilities, all of which based in marijuana. Um, so, all those different, other than the fifth one is, uh, the other two are testing facilities, uh, which there probably won't be very many in the state, and then they call transportation facilities, uh, really transportation, think of like a trucking company, like a marijuana trucking company, they're not really a facility in my mind, as much as they are something that's moving, but, um, they do apparently will have, they will have a base. Uh, okay, so what can the city do? Well, uh, you can't prohibit medical marijuana, so if anybody's sitting here thinking, well, we wanna do everything we can to keep medical marijuana out of Fulton, it isn't gonna happen, you don't have that ability, they've taken that away. Um, you can't regulate who it's going to be, so the state will decide who gets a license, there are, uh, a number of people who've already applied for a license, uh, by the way, uh, I was, I was talking to the reporter before this, it's the greatest moneymaker the state ever thought of, um, it's ten thousand dollars, not to apply for a license, but just to put your name in as someone who is going to eventually apply for a license, okay? And they have gotten five hundred and fifty of these applications at ten thousand dollars apiece, and they've promised these people nothing, and in fact, when they apply for a license, they'll have to pay another fee at that time, so this, this is a great way, a great way to waste money. Um, you, you can't, uh, make laws that are so restrictive that it essentially effectively kicks all medical marijuana facilities out of, out of Fulton. So what can you do? Um, you can, you can control the time of operation, this tends to be one area that cities, uh, vary in a lot. I have one city that, uh, they've, they, they want them closed down by six p.m. I've got another city that thinks twenty-four hours a day is great, they would do twenty-five if they could. Um, so you gotta kinda figure, what do you think would be a reasonable times for these to be open? Now, I will tell you as you're thinking about these questions, what the medical marijuana industry will tell you is that medical marijuana is just essentially the same as Walgreens, uh, it's just like a pharmacy, and so, you know, you should consider it that way. The data does not support that, right? They are in fact very different from your average Walgreens, uh, for a number of reasons. One is, they are a completely cash industry, they are not banked, they're not allowed to use the banking system, so all the transactions they do are in cash, so these dispensaries will have large amounts of cash and large amounts of marijuana in them. They are, they are, they are an attractive nuisance for thieves, uh, they, people will be, will be drawn to them in that respect. Uh, the studies all show that their impact is very much like what a payday loan facility would be, so it has sort of an impact in the neighborhood, there are some crime issues that kind of come along with them, not terrible, but, uh, there are, there are some, and so you should need to consider those, things that you don't have with, with Walgreens. Um, in terms of the time, I would just kind of give you for a reference, right now, we control when you can sell alcohol, so generally speaking, the bars shut down at one, uh, I think the liquor stores shut, shut down at the same time, I'm not really sure, I'm not really out at that time buying liquor much anymore. Um, so, we, you know, you may wanna kinda think in terms of, of how you handle liquor and treat it something similar to that, more than like a pharmacy. So you, you need to think about place, and this is where we were talking about zoning, where do you want these facilities to be, and remember, there's the five types of facilities. What will Fulton get? It's hard to know, I mean, you can look at the applications and kinda see who's interested, you know, in Fulton, but we don't really know, and there may be people who have not yet applied yet, who eventually will be located in, in Fulton. I would say that it's very likely, in my estimation, that Fulton will have a dispensary.
Can you tell me, is that list published already, who has purchased-
Yes.
-the request, and it's, it's available?
Yes, it is available on the state website, um, and you can also look on that website, it's very interesting, the licenses that they're gonna give out are based on congressional district, so some congressional districts have more applications than they have licenses that they can give out, other districts have, uh, fewer licenses, fewer applications than they have to give out, and so everyone in those areas who's applied will get one, other places that will use a point system to determine who gets them. The state's goal is to have, uh, every patient be within twenty-five miles of a dispensary, so if you kinda look at the draw area that Fulton has, it's very likely I would think that Fulton, you know, would have a dispensary. Plus, I think just, you know, in terms of, of population, it's, it's, it's pretty likely. Uh, but there's also, you know, cultivation facilities, now, when you have a cultivation, obviously we're talking about growing, but when you're thinking about placing these things, these are mostly indoor facilities, so they would be, you know, an old warehouse is what they like, if they can get a warehouse, they're usually looking for about fifty thousand square foot warehouse is kind of what they, what they want, which actually, if you've got some old warehouses, you know, you can rezone them and make this, you know, work in that, a good way to find any use for those old warehouses if you've got them. Um, there will be in the state outdoor growing, but that obviously won't take place inside the city of Fulton, that would be prohibitively expensive, uh, but some of these indoor warehouses may have a little bit of outdoor, but mostly they'll be, they'll be indoor. And then again, the manufacturing is just like manufacturing, it's like any other kinda manufacturing plant, you should kinda probably think in terms of where manufacturing should occur. They do use some harsh chemicals in making the stuff, um, and that's, that's been a concern, they use large amounts of CO2, I don't pretend to understand the process, but, you know, in terms of where you locate them, those are some issues to, to think about. You are allowed by the state to control the distance that they are from schools, churches, and daycare. So, you needed, number one, is define what is daycare, I would recommend you just use the term licensed daycare, because if you take every daycare, that's a lot. And it might make it, you know, it's, it's gonna be hard to measure. There is an ongoing debate right now about how we're gonna measure the thousand feet. This may seem like a lawyer's issue, maybe it is, we do love these kind of things. Right now, everything that we measure, if you think in terms of how the city of Fulton measures liquor licenses right now, is we measure door to door as the crow flies. So, if you've got a church and you want to put in a liquor store across the street, we'll run a tape measure from the door of one to the door of the other. Some cities do property line to property line, but that's how it works. The state has invented yet a third way to do it, with their infinite wisdom. And this is what they call walking distance. So, if you imagine a busy street, and there's a, a, a church on one side of the street, and someone wants to put a medical marijuana facility on the other side of the street. Now, as the crow flies, those may only be 100 feet apart, maybe less. But, what the state says is you have to measure, you have to go up to the intersection, cross over the road, come back down the intersection. So, now, you may be over 1,000 feet. So, we have, on behalf of our clients, suggested to the state that's a terrible idea, and why don't you just let us measure it the way we measure everything else? I have not heard back from them, who knows what they'll do? But my recommendation is that you measure it the way you measure everything else, and if the state says, no, you're gonna have to measure it this crazy walking distance way, then you just adopt your ordinance accordingly.
And the measurements that are in your handouts, we can modify those measurements?
Yes, okay, so my handouts, I'll just tell you this, these are, these are just suggestions. I did kind of mock them up, you know, as Bill asked me to, so that they, they reflect kind of how they would look in your code, but they are just a starting point, all right? You need to go and look at all those distances, I kind of put in the maximum of everything, and they're, mine are probably on the more stringent side. You may want to be less, there's a little bit of a room to be a little more stringent than what I've got, we could maybe talk about that. But, pretty much, I've kind of shown you what the parameters are. And really just think of them in terms of all the numbers that are in there, what do you want to fill out, what's best for Fulton? And that will vary from town to town.
Has the state set those maximums?
It's a thousand feet, it's the maximum, but the amendment says specifically that cities can make it less.
But we can't make it more?
You can't make it more.
Am I, am I wrong to what I am informed of, that they have not finalized?
Their rules?
Everything, the rules and regulations yet.
Oh, they have not.
Okay, so...
Well, their rules, their rules are gonna answer some questions. Mainly their rules, though, are directed at how people get licensed, how people will get permits to, to purchase medical marijuana. They really have not, until very recently, started thinking about, well, what are cities supposed to do? And they probably won't address most of those things. There's also, as we will see, a whole chunk of criminal law that needs to get changed, and the state legislature has done nothing on that. There's no bills introduced, there's no nothing that's been done, they don't even really seem to recognize that that is a problem. So, until that happens, the city's gonna be in a quandary, you know? As I said at the beginning, one of the things we have is, right now, in, in the city of Fulton, it's illegal to possess marijuana. But when this, when, when the law becomes effective and people start to be allowed to possess marijuana, what do we do? What do we tell our officers? Do you arrest people, or do you not arrest people? And so, you are gonna have to, by ordinance, fix what the state has not yet fixed. They are still doing their draft ordinance, the latest one came out May 3rd, their, their draft regulations. They will probably by the 1st of June have that process finalized, but there are huge holes. And even then, it's mainly directed at something else. They did finally fix, one of my pet peeves was, they are allowed to control signage, we are not allowed as a city to control signage, they are. Most states, they don't allow you to have the big marijuana leaf, you know, or the word marijuana. I have a great slide from California where it's just, you know, the sign just says weed, and it has a handprint.
Oh, really?
So, you don't want that in form. But they have finally now said, you have to, you can't use the word marijuana, and you can't use the marijuana leaf in your sign, so that's, that's definitely a step forward for us.
You mentioned the possession?
Yeah.
And the law enforcement of that. At, at some point, they're, they're gonna have to have a card?
Yeah.
They're gonna have to have...
Oh, yeah.
And I'll come back to that if you just give me a minute here.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll try and push forward a little, a little quicker, I, I know you're kind of drinking from the fire hose here, I just wanted, think of this as just, these are the issues to be thinking about.
My other question, at whatever point you get to it, is public consumption.
Yes, I'll just answer that real quick, public consumption is illegal under the amendment. So, but you'll have to have an ordinance in order to enforce that, there is no state law about it, and the Department of Health cannot enforce criminal laws.
So, what have to do here?
So, we'll need an ordinance?
You'll need an ordinance about public consumption.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, another, another issue that I would want you to think about in terms of zoning before we leave zoning is aesthetics. Right now, the way that things are kind of evolving in Missouri is, again, as I said, these dispensaries are high risk. So, the way things are kind of being visualized right now, I like to compare them to pawn stores, you know, the lesser desirable pawn shops. Where there's no windows, razor wire on the roof, maybe a big razor wire fence around it, okay? I, you know, I used to live in Fulton, I don't think that's what you all want in Fulton. So, aesthetics is something to consider, although security is obviously an issue. But if you look on the, on, if you just Google medical marijuana dispensaries, and look at how they look in other states, some do look like little fortresses. But some of them are really beautiful, you know, you could have a really good one and still have it secure. And so, the city may want to think about, what do we want in our city? Do we want the razor wire, and we not want the razor wire? I know that there, just now, the state is working on the regulations for home grow, whether they're gonna allow outdoor home grow or not. And the proposed rules, they haven't published yet, they had to, that you can grow it in your backyard, grow up to nine plants in your backyard, but they had to be surrounded by 10 feet of razor wire with lights. Can you imagine, in the neighborhood, in the backyard, how that would go over? Not good, you know? So, those are issues that have to be dealt with.
Question, can, take that example.
Yeah.
Can we say no outdoor growing in a residential area?
You cannot. You cannot, but you can, I believe, put some, some limitations on it, okay? And we need to probably figure out ways to do that that don't look, you know, like Auschwitz, but at the same time, you know, keep it safe. Outdoor growing in residential neighborhoods is an extremely bad idea, and if you ask me, the state should not allow it. Because it's just too difficult to keep it secure. Every teenager is gonna be plucking leaves that they can possibly get, so...
And you really don't want, you know, big lights on. And if you live next door, you really don't want big lights on your neighbor's backyard.
You don't, and...
The police officers are...
Well, I have one in my house right now.
And one thing that we'll talk about over and over and over is odor, you know, and I'm not talking about the smoke, all right? But marijuana and its raw state smells, very pungent odor. And, and I just, in another city, a guy from the state of Washington spoke to their city council. They were looking at, at the same things you guys were looking at, and he was saying that where he lived in the state of Washington, he lived on a farm, and the medical marijuana was a mile away, and he can spell it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I feel of it.
So, okay, so, you can't regulate how many facilities are gonna be in Fulton? Although, to some extent, you can kind of backdoor, which is, you can require a distance between the facilities. A lot of cities do this with liquor establishments. So, you can say, you can't have two facilities within, say, 1,000 feet of each other. And depending what that distance is, obviously, that would regulate how many facilities could be in Fulton, if that was something that you were interested in doing. It's, however, I would say I wouldn't worry too much about that, because it's not very likely, if you do the math, that Fulton's gonna get more than one of each type of facility. And I would say, tops, you might get two facilities total. We really think it's unlikely that any city is gonna get too much. Okay, so odor, you want to talk about, you know, in terms of these facilities, what are they gonna do to control odor? That is an issue I will say the state has not really addressed very well. They have said they have to have, in their words, adequate odor control, it's part of their application. Well, that doesn't really do any good, what we want is something that, when there's an odor problem, your code enforcement or your police can go out and do something about it. So, if you look at these ordinances, these models that we've shown you, it has an objective standard, which is similar to what we do with light, which is, if the officer can stand on the property line and smell it, it's too strong. If he can't smell it, it's okay, and that's a good objective standard.
Do you feel like some of this might play into fact with what's going through Jefferson City right now with CAFOs? A lot of the same issues are gonna come up on, on the CAFO versus this?
It is.
When it's smell, chemicals, and everything else.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I think it's true in almost any kind of zoning kind of issues, those are the kinds of issues, you know? You can have smell problems, I used to be a city prosecutor, and I prosecuted a smelly house because the guy had cats, you know, and he just had so many cats in the house, smelled, and it's difficult to prosecute smell. But I felt for the neighbors, you know, that it's an issue. And, you know, you all can decide how stringent or lenient you want to be on it, but you've got to think about it. My only, my only appeal to you tonight is to think about these issues and make a rational choice on all of them.
Retreat.
Okay, just real quick, taxes, because I get this question a lot. You, all you'll get from them is sales taxes, you don't, you can't impose any kind of special taxes on them. So, if you look at the different kinds of facilities, dispensaries will generate a lot of sales taxes, but the other types of sales will not generate any sales taxes for you at all.
But, does the state, we don't charge taxes on prescriptions, do we?
No, that's a really good question.
And that's what medical marijuana is.
It is not prescription, it's not a prescription.
It's not?
It is not, and nor is it an over the counter drug. So, because that's, that's a really good question, it was one of the first questions that I thought about, that's why I'm complimenting you, because it took me a long time to figure out what the answer to it is. Okay, so doctors, you hear people always saying is doctors are gonna prescribe medical marijuana, that's not true. Doctors are forbidden by law from prescribing medical marijuana. So, what you will do is, if you want to use medical marijuana, you will go to your doctor and say, I have glaucoma. And the doctor will give you a statement that says Nathan Nicholas has glaucoma. And then you will take that, and $25, and some sort of abbreviated background check, give it to the state of Missouri, and they'll give you a little card. That's how that, how, how that works. So, it's not prescribed, it would be tax exempt if it was prescribed. But I also thought, now, some places, over the counter drugs are also exempt from paying taxes. But it's not over the counter, because the FDA defines the term over the counter, and things, for the FDA, this is the weird world of medical marijuana. For the federal government, all this stuff's all illegal, it's still illegal, it's as illegal as it ever has been. So, the FDA says, it's not an over the counter drug, it's just illegal, you can't have it, you know? So, it's not an over the counter drug, it's not a prescription drug. So, yes, it is subject to sales tax, but the bigger facilities, you know, the, the cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, they don't generate any retail sales, so you'll get nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
From that.
Now, the amendment talked about a 4% tax.
There is, that doesn't go to you, though.
Right, it just goes to the state.
That goes to the state.
So, a distribution facility will pay the 4%, then they'll pay the state sales tax and the county's...
They'll pay the state sales tax.
No state.
It's all sale.
So, they'll pay...
They'll just pay the 4%.
Well, the 4%, but then they'll pay the county sales tax?
No, they won't pay any sales tax.
Well, we just, no, I'm talking the, the distribution, the dispensary.
Yeah, the dispensary will pay the city, state, and local sales tax?
Okay.
Plus 4%.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does, okay. None of it else makes sense, but yeah, that makes sense.
You can charge them a business license, but you have to treat them like any other business. So, I don't know what Charles' business license fee is, but you know, most places, it's like $25, so...
So, we, we can't say medical marijuana is, like the city does, is 15 grand or something?
No special permit, no medical marijuana permit, nothing like that. Now, you can, as part of your zoning code, require them to have what's called a special use permit or conditional use permit. I looked at the zoning code a little bit, I couldn't really figure out which one, those two you use, but there's generally a fee, so when you apply for a zoning change, there's a fee, so all those kind of fees, they, they pay, just like anybody else would pay, but nothing that's...
Yeah, but it's like a one-time 100 bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not like...
It's no money.
Right, it's no money. And these are guys who laid down $10,000 for nothing, so 100 bucks to pay to you guys is nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, just some other topics. One that I like to point out is employee policies, you'll have to look at your employee policies. Why? Because medical marijuana changes a lot of things. Police officers and fire, firemen will not be able to have medical marijuana permits. Because police officers carry guns, and it is against federal law, if you're a drug user, which is what the words of federal law uses, to carry a gun, all right? Firemen drive large equipment, and federal law DOT says, if you're a regular drug user, you can't drive large equipment. So, this is again, this federal-state thing. In general, probably, most of your city employees will not be able to use medical marijuana. They certainly can't use it at inside city hall. Why? Because when you took that money from the federal government a few years ago, which everybody does, you signed this thing saying you would have a drug-free workplace.
That's right.
The state, the, the federal government has made it very clear that the use of medical marijuana is a violation of the drug-free workplace. So, you have that. ADA, you know, you may have employees that come to you and say, I, I want as an accommodation under ADA to be able to use medical marijuana. But you've got this thing that's saying you can't allow that because it's a drug-free workplace. The answer is ADA won't apply, because ADA does not apply to illegal substances. You don't get that as a reasonable accommodation, and since ADA is a federal law, it doesn't, you don't get medical marijuana. But, but, and you can discipline your employees, under the, under the Amendment Two, it allows you specifically to discipline your employees for all those things. But you may want to think about your union agreements, if you have an agreement with the, with the police and the fire, and have some specific clauses added to those to deal with how these things are.
Is the limitation from that the state won't issue that card because of their employment statute?
State will issue it, but if a police officer, for instance, if he took that card from the state, you would have to fire him.
Okay.
I see, yeah, 'cause he's...
And so, you probably need to make sure your employees all know that.
Under our current ordinances, our current state laws, current federal law, or is it something?
It's under current federal law.
Okay.
Yeah, under the, the federal firearms, you know, prohibits. What they define as...
Well, what about the fire? What about the fire?
That's Department of Transportation, the, the US Department of Transp, USDOT, not Missouri DOT.
The majority of employees drive company vehicles.
So, would that apply to anybody with a CDL?
Anybody with a CDL.
Anybody that drives one of your vehicles could apply to.
Yeah, so, in all likelihood, no city employees would be allowed to do that.
But I still don't agree with some of it, because federally, it's still illegal.
Well, and from, from the employment perspective, we could, it could, it's still drug use, correct? So, we can still test it, we can do random?
Yes.
If it's in our current handbook saying thou shalt not use drugs while you're an employee, not just in the building, anywhere, then that, that all still stands.
But you need to let them know, you know, so for instance, if you had an employee who was in an accident, had to take a drug test, okay? Even though he's got that, that permit to use medical marijuana, and even though he was only using it on off-hours, he'll still have marijuana in his system. And what the, the federal government has said is, we're not making any exceptions to the drug test just because your state has legalized marijuana. And so, he would be in violation and would lose his CDL.
And even if it's just an office worker and we do a random drug test, and they're found positive, it's the same thing.
And, and I was at a conference last week, two weeks ago, and there was, we actually had two sessions on marijuana given by two different attorneys.
So, you got three opinions?
So, we got lots of opinions.
We're a half hour in now, and much more to come.
I mean, one, one issue is, you know, for us to get grants, we have to be a federal, we have to be a drug-free workplace. So, if we kind of turn the other cheek and say, we're not gonna worry about it?
We better.
There, there go the grants.
No, we better, yeah.
Sorry to take some of your thunder, but...
No, 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 go ahead.
No, I think there's plenty unanswered questions even within the state at this point, to, obviously, a little bit of thinking about it, but the state is unsure what's happening. They don't know what they're doing.
They do not.
And because of that, can't we just let this sort of lie for a while?
Yes.
No.
No, heart of it.
No, and I'll tell you why, because I'm about to get into really the heart of it that really needs to be addressed, I mean, zoning has to be addressed, you're gonna have to do something about zoning between now and January 1st. Because January 1st, people are gonna come wanting to start locating. If you do not have zoning for medical marijuana, if you've done nothing about the subject, then they can locate anywhere in the city. It's not like most zoning, because they have a right, a constitutional right now, to locate their medical marijuana facility within your city. So, you can't, if you have no zoning, then the, the courts are gonna say, you didn't say no, that means yes. So, you're gonna have to, between now and then, decide that. And in fact, what most cities are looking at is, June 1st is when these, these different companies are gonna start making their applications to the state for medical marijuana. And so, they want to know... And so they wanna know before they decide to locate in Fulton, whatever the rule's gonna be. And so you need to start kinda making decisions.
Oh, yeah.
On all those things. Uh, I know I've taken up a huge amount of time and I'll try and, and go through the rest real.
I'm, I was just gonna say, I, I did, you know, Tom Riley's our city attorney. I did contact him about, you know, Tom is usually the guy we would talk to about putting together an ordinance. I talked to him about using Nathan. Nathan was fully supportive of using Nathan due to the fact Nathan has done several in these other towns before. He's got several communities under his belt. Um, I'm gonna say we're actually, I don't know if we're behind the curve yet, but we're getting closer to being behind the curve.
You're getting close to being behind.
Sounds like it.
You're, you're ahead of Columbia right now, just, just having this discussion, but you're ahead of Columbia, so that's always good.
But we're already behi- we're behind Kingdom City, Kingdom City's already adopted theirs.
Yep. Oh, FED's already adopted.
They haven't, they haven't.
FED has, FED has, Kingdom City has, Peculiar has, Ray Town's having this discussion, I was just up there last week.
Keep going.
I've had two different, two different business groups come in and meet and discuss and talk and plan. It, folks, it's coming.
Of course.
Well, it's gonna happen no matter what.
We've gotta address this.
But, you know, you talk about congressional districts, how it's gonna lay out. That's all up in the air in the state of Missouri.
But that's still, we gotta get ready.
But, but something is going to be approved.
The timetable is incredibly short and we wish we'd had more time to kinda think out some of these issues.
And I, I kinda think we're, I'm, I'm not trying to cut, I'm not trying to cut you off and I'd like to open it up for discussion. But what I'm kinda thinking is, let Nathan present to us his, his concept of every stinking ordinance we need pertaining to marijuana. And then between Chief Myers, Dennis, and myself, and anybody, and anybody on the council that wants to get involved, we'll, we'll have a couple of meetings and, I mean, like I, I know I'm saying, you can't be located within five hundred feet of a residentially zoned district. I don't, that's gonna be tough to find in Fulton, within five hundred.
Yeah, cuz we've got residents everywhere.
That's a block and a half, folks, that's.
The other, the other one that needs to probably be involved is the county, you know, and, and Sheriff Chisholm. He needs to be involved in.
Well, the county doesn't have zoning.
Well, but the county, the county has, it's gonna have.
They can't have a struggling with some of these issues.
Exactly why.
Very, very few of these types of grow facilities and or production facilities are gonna locate outside of cities for, for a number of reasons.
You kill it.
They're looking, they're looking at Chief Myers, they're looking at the police department, being able to protect their investment. They have a incredible use of water.
Correct.
But they are going to recycle the water and have detention ponds and settling ponds to let the, the nasty so- fall, fall out and then recycle the water to water again. They're going to, it's gonna have to be on a natural gas system.
The waste, yeah.
To provide heat for the grow facility in the wintertime. They, they are going to locate in towns. They are not gonna go out onto, you know, Coal Miner Road or something and buy twenty acres and put something up. It's just not gonna happen.
So the, the planning and zoning board needs to get deeply involved.
Oh, we will, but I think what I'm saying is, you know, let the three or four, six of us take his model.
Which is this, I've given you my model.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take him, mark it up, and then at that point in time, we will, we will bring it to the city council for, like, okay, this is what we think, this is why we think, these are the numbers we think would work in Fulton. Um, instead of just coming with, and that, peace and love, instead of coming with something generic, coming at you with something that people that care about Fulton more than Nathan and know Fulton more than Nathan, um, would like to recommend and suggest to the city council. And then, once we kinda get you on board-ish, then we take it to the P and Z. There's, there's some ordinances that aren't gonna require P and Z. But then take it to the P and Z and do, to do some of the zoning changes, the zoning modifications and that. But I, I'm hoping we can get this done by maybe the end of July, you know, just kind of.
That's pretty aggressive.
It's aggressive, but it's, you know.
It's really aggressive.
It's not, it's not really as bad, you know, I've laid out to you all the different things, you know, and that's the longest part of it. You go through these ordinances, you'll see, a lot of it, there's not stuff you can really change, it just is what it is, but there are things like the five hundred feet and things, you just need to go through and really you could do it, you know, in that timeframe. I do disagree, I, I love Fulton a lot, I went to school.
I have one question. Earlier you said they've been out by districts, so pretty much, we don't, we can't, do they do a background check on the people that pay their ten thousand? So we have no option to ever stop this because we think this person's gonna get it.
You don't get to choose whether they come and you don't get to choose who comes. All you can do is what they do once they're here.
Right. Where they put it, what, how, yeah, exactly.
What's the relationship of the CBD oil products to this?
Uh, good question. Uh, yeah, there's no relation. So right now CBD is legal. Um, CBD is extracted from hemp, it doesn't have any of the, uh.
THC.
The THC, yeah, and so, uh, there's a T, there's a CBD in Jeff City.
There's two of them here.
Family Video.
Yeah, yeah.
Family Video is our local CDBX.
Well, there's one, the tobacco shop at the south end of town.
So you would, you would zone them, just like you'd zone any other retail. And if they wanted to, there are manufacturing CBDs in some cities, uh, where they're taking raw hemp and, and creating CBD, uh, and that, uh, that way you would just treat it like any other manufacturing. That's why in here, the definitions, you know, they get this long definition of what is marijuana? Why, you know, why do we need that? Because what we're really doing is saying marijuana is not CBD.
But, but I thought CBD was only legal med- medically.
No.
No, that's not.
Cuz that's what I keep reading in the Missouri statutes.
It's like vitamin water.
They've expanded that.
Okay.
And you can buy it at video stores.
Well, I know that, but also it says that nobody's enforcing the law.
And they also, they also say that it's possible that it could come back positive if you read their disclaimers on a drug test.
Yeah.
It's a small minute amount, but there's a possibility.
If I could though, just hit a couple criminal things, you know, switching to the criminal side of, of things. Uh, but I'm glad you're, the chief is here because these things, he's gonna struggle with. Uh, public consumption, public consumption is illegal under the amendment. You have to define what is public, right? Generally speaking, we're talking about inside your residence. Uh, well, we say the ordinance is residence or a residence of another person who gives permission, okay? But, uh, there are a lot of variations, you know, of that, you know, in terms of what is a, what is a residence. And so that's things to think about. Also, you'll need to have an ordinance that says if somebody consumes it in public, that you can ticket them. It's probably not a jailing kind of offense, but the question is, you know, for the officers, if they see somebody consuming in public, what do they do? Well, they, you gotta give them the ability to do something. The state will not be able to do anything about that, because they don't issue, issue tickets. Uh, there is kind of a weird question that there is no answer to, and that is, what if they're consuming something that isn't smoking? So they're doing the gummy bears, the cookies or something like that. I don't know, I don't know how you know whether they're consuming marijuana or not. So, uh, driving under the influence, I already talked about, so I'll, I'll skip that. Right now, the law says that you have to transport medical marijuana in its original package. You're gonna need to have a city ordinance like that too, so that when the police stop somebody, and I don't know if y'all are Life PD fans, I'm a huge Life PD fan, and all the other states where they have this medical marijuana, everybody who has marijuana in their car, they, oh, I got a medical marijuana permit. You got it on you? No. Well, how comes it's on the original package? Oh, you know, I broke it open, I forgot to put it in the package. You know, the kinda stuff you normally hear. So they gotta, you gotta be able to give the officers the ability to ticket that, alright? Because maybe that's really medical marijuana, but what if it's not? You know, so that gives the officer a reason to start ticketing that kind of thing and to force people to carry their cards, so they should be punished for not carrying your card and punished for not having it in the original package. Now, one thing I will throw out here that disturbs me a lot, but it's gonna be the way it is, the state's gonna allow you to carry up to twelve ounces on your person.
That's not, that's not, that's not individual consumption.
That is not individual consumption. That's what, the state even says, that's ninety days worth of consumption.
Yeah.
But you can have all of that on you, you know, which I think is just absurd, but that's, that's what it is. That's like, that's like a Walmart bag of marijuana. It's a, it's a lot of marijuana.
Yep.
I just left the store.
I just left the store.
I just left the dispensary.
Uh, one thing that's not really clear, and we're gonna have to wait for the state to clarify, is, will dispensaries be able to deliver to homes and nursing homes and things like that? Marijuana growers all think that that is gonna happen, I have not seen it in the state regs. Uh, but if that's the case, we need to figure out how we're gonna track that, you know, because if somebody, if a police officer stops somebody and they say, oh, I'm just making a delivery, it's not my marijuana, I'm delivering it, you know, for this store, well, how do we know?
Are other states doing that?
Other states have, have addressed this much better than Missouri has, yeah.
Are they doing, like, like Colorado, are they? They are.
Well, Colorado's, it's legal now entirely.
Well, that's the whole thing.
But like New Mexico, where they have medical marijuana, yes, you can.
Okay.
If you're in a nursing home, they'll deliver it to you just like any other drug.
So, how do you deal with it in a nursing home? I mean, you've got, you could have two people in a room and one has it and one doesn't.
Remember, remember my second question?
Everybody has it.
What is a residence?
We do not regulate nursing homes.
Because nurses, they look on the institutional people like that. Yeah.
What's the rules gonna be? Uh, cuz by the way, you got two colleges. I'd look at them too.
Oh, they're already helping, they're doing it themselves.
Yeah, they've been doing medical marijuana for a while now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, secondhand smoke, which is kinda where you're heading, is, is gonna be an issue. Uh, obviously, if they're in public, you know, that's not an issue, they're just not gonna be allowed to do that. But imagine if you were in, in an apartment building and your neighbor next door is smoking marijuana. It's drifting into your apartment. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's bad enough with smoke, but now we're talking about marijuana smoke. Uh, also, what if you lived in an apartment and there's a common area? Could they smoke out, you know, by the, the pool? Uh, then, you know, as you said, institutionalized. And that brings me to the end of my list.
What are they allowed or cannot sell in a dispensary?
What's the question? Are. What can they not sell?
What can they not sell?
Yeah, in terms of drugs or in terms of?
Other items, like, do they?
Uh, right now, it looks like they're gonna be able to sell, uh, you know, pipes and things like that, uh, which is gonna be a little difficult, because right now, uh, pipes that are designed or sold for the purpose of, of consuming marijuana are illegal in Missouri. And that law has not been changed. So.
It's even greater marijuana, but not the paraphernalia.
Exactly. The paraphernalia would still be illegal under current law.
Ticket you for the pipe, just not the Walmart bag full of marijuana.
Yeah, so, right now, there, Missouri has what's called the head shop law, and it says, you know, uh, that you can't, uh, you can't have a, a store that's, that caters to devices to, to smoke marijuana. So if you look at those places, the ones that still exist, they all say, oh, this is just for tobacco. Even though it's got the big grateful dibs on it. But, uh, those, so, so the stores in theory could sell pipes and things, except that they're gonna have to say they're not selling them for marijuana.
Okay.
It's happening, it's happening currently, right now, in, in this city and every city in the state.
Absolutely. So, that's an issue that, that you all need to think about.
Wow.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So, so did my proposal work for the city council, a group of us get together and work through the details and?
I certainly think that retreat wise. Another item for the retreat or, or something similar, I'd be happy to.
Committee.
We need a pop retreat and bring the munchies like, yeah.
I know our smoking ordinances all talk about tobacco.
Yes, you'll have to go and look at those and probably see where they need to change to add the word marijuana to that as well, because they do.
Or just smoking.
Yeah, they do very specifically define just tobacco.
Rather than, yeah, just smoking.
Just any kind of smoking.
Exactly.
And now there's two kinds of smoking.
You know, the vapor thing, the, the mechanical thing.
Yeah, although you don't have to worry about some of it, because they won't be able to smoke in restaurants, you know, without.
By customers, yeah, exactly.
But you do have to think about, you know, uh, what if, since there are issues you have with a smoking ordinance where, you know, people set up private clubs, you know, and they say, well, this is not a public place, it's a private club, and therefore we can smoke tobacco in here.
You mean like the VFW?
Well, right, it's the VFW, only they're all smoking weed. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and Bill, I think what you're proposing is a workable solution.
Can I get this in email?
I don't have it.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we've been at this for two and a half hours almost. Does anybody wanna break, wanna take a quick, quick break?
Yes, I would.
Yes, breaks.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll convene for five minutes.
Taking care of him with the last surgery when he took.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't relate to Nicholas, but it involves us as the city council.
But anyhow.
Are we going to enter into some kind of an agreement with Mr. Nicholas?
He signed a letter of engagement.
Is that something that should not have come to city council? Or should have come to city council potentially?
They never have before.
Oh, so.
Just a pretty big deal.
So, yeah, we are retaining you?
Just for this.
Okay.
And my bill, I assured, I assured him that my bill will be well below what his spending authorization is.
What are you spending on what? What are you spending on?
My spending authorization. All we have added to it is a couple hours of preparation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just.
Okay, where were we?
Yeah.
So, the rest of this, we should be able to burn through pretty quick. Thanks for your patience. The City of Fulton offender work program?
I just put that on there. We've had several employees that went through a full day training, a full day training, to be certified to be supervisors of the offenders. I don't want to give you a date, but I think in the next thirty days, we probably will have them back. I think we're gonna be starting with four. We've had more than that in the past, but we want to make sure that we can play nice with four before we go, before we step it up at all.
I'm lost.
Okay.
I'm lost. Whoa, what do I?
Where are?
The F R D C?
The inmates.
Okay, I see, okay, I'm sorry.
I think we're within thirty days of getting the inmates back.
Thank you, okay, I, I, thank you.
Oh, some are coming on, that's a good thing. We need some help. That's great.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they do play nice and we keep that program going. That saves the city a lot of money and the backs and sweat and tears of some of our folks, so. And they love it too. Defenders like getting out of that place, so. Moving on, council members may discuss matters for, or concerns not on the agenda. We'll start with Councilman Schibberdicker.
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Moore?
Yes, I do. It's just a same, I brought it up last year and I'm just gonna bring it up again this year since we have a new guy at the golf course. I think that we should do some advertising to meet, come out and meet him or run something with it. And, you know, when I went out to look at the bathrooms, they're working on those now. And so, other than that, I just think that the course looked very, I don't play golf, but the course was nice. Took a tour of it today. Very beautiful, mowed and trimmed and so. And former Governor Wilson and his clan was out there playing from Columbia and so. Good conversation. And I want to say thank you to the Fulton Fire Department, the Fulton Police. From a lady in Jefferson Street apparently made a call and they both assisted her and took her knees and so. Kudos to them.
Very good.
Councilwoman Paesnook?
I just wanted to ask about all the rain that we've had in Stinson Creek. And I know we definitely have some on like Glenstone area that have complained about flooding before. And so, just wanted to get a update on all that.
Yeah, Lindsay, I checked with, to be honest with you, I've had like zero complaints, which is amazing. You know, concerning the inundation of this spring. But I did check with Gary Felkner, the head of our street department, and also Anna Zare with our sewer departments to see if, see if they had complaints. And Gary said nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, you know, typical streets that need to be closed due to flooding, Brookside, out of the parks and whatnot. Anna said that she had a couple backups, sewer backups during the process, but she said it wasn't, it wasn't anything atypical. And I also checked with Robert to see if there were many claims. And again, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. He pretty well cited the couple backups that Anna did, so.
Thank you for looking into that.
Very good. Councilman Brown?
Kyle. If you want to move the sign on Park Ridge, I think it's been there an adequate amount of time and it could be relocated if somebody else would like the street with it.
Yeah, I was actually talking with the street department about that earlier this week and it'll.
We might bring it back, but at this point, it can go somewhere else. It's been there an adequate amount of time. Thank you.
If you guys have a suggestion of where you'd like to sit, I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I ask them one more question on Jefferson and coming up from Second and Fourth Street? Can you give about a time when they'd be finished through there?
Oh, the storm sewer system that we're building, the street department's building from, from Fourth Street right now to, up to Seventh Street.
So they're going over at the seventh?
Yeah, it'll be just, just past Seventh Street. Looking for, looking for a timeframe?
Just by the neighbors, or if you're just filling a couple of the potholes by Seventh Street that they can get through quick, just don't worry about it then.
Okay, yeah, they've, after the sidewalk on Business 54, they've, they've started over on Jefferson Street this week and should be progressively working on that project as weather permits, so. You know, that's, there's a lot of utilities in the way, so we'll be working around those utilities and just working our way up to Seven. I mean, they're, they should be staying on that job until it finishes timeframe wise.
I don't think it's yet.
It's coming. It'll be done soon.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
Councilwoman Stone?
I have one question for Kyle. The, the roadwork that's been done on South Business 54 is absolutely wonderful, but it highlights when it changes over to concrete as it approaches the overpass, that, that section that's between where they stopped paving to where the overpass is, is, I've gotten a lot of complaints on that. Just the roughness, the bouncing. And I didn't know, are you aware, is that, is that planned for replacement?
That, there's.
I know it's MoDOT, but I didn't know if you.
They, they did some full depth pavement repair on that concrete. Other than that, I don't believe anything else is scheduled. I'll check with MoDOT and voice that concern with MoDOT.
Where they've done that repair, it now.
Right, right.
It rides very rough.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
Oh, sorry.
Two more. One is, we were, the, the street fair parade and our involvement. I would like to suggest, as we did a couple of years ago when we had a float in the parade, that we pass out the ice pops. I understand that that was not a very expensive endeavor and was greatly appreciated by all those that attended the parade where we were able to hand those. I'd like for that to be a part of our participation in the parade.
And then I attended a community meeting, or a meeting, yeah, a meeting last, what was that? That was just yesterday.
Yesterday.
Wow. On a, it's, on a presentation of a program, it's called Community Land Grant. And it's an opportunity to, for the, it's the City of Columbia is doing it now, the City of Springfield does it, and many other communities have it as part of a nonprofit. And it's a way of taking properties and converting them over to homes and making it, turning them into homeownership while keeping the affordability down. I won't go into the details greatly, but during the, listening to the proclamation that we made sixty years ago when we took a blighted area and created housing, it's along that same vein. And so I think in that same spirit, Dennis was able to attend, we had some other community leaders there. And I think it's really something that, that we need to pursue and look into in great detail as a city. So I hope you'll, you'll hear more about this. That's it.
Very good.
I have a couple things. First of all, could we possibly get the flagpole at Memorial Park painted? It's white and it's a mess. I don't think anybody's noticed it but me. It just needs to be painted. I think it would improve the looks of the flag. Also, the, today they put the first light up on the corner in front of Video Store there, heading up. And it's awesome. My new light, it's just cool. Just wanted to share that. Okay.
Cool.
Looks great.
Councilwoman Stowe?
Several months ago, we talked about the banner going across Business 54 and about how the light poles that we're putting up won't support it. And so we were gonna put up a couple of, I'll get there, a couple of light poles that, where they aren't existing right now. Except now we have the banner north of Ovid Bell Press, which is a perfect place for it.
Moser's old lot, we, I thought I said something.
Yeah, we use the existing poles.
That looks nice.
And I think that's.
You did say.
I do too. Yeah, I remember that.
I don't remember that, but.
Okay.
So anyway, it worked.
It worked. We're back in the banner business.
Yep.
Yep, it looks nice.
The other thing is, next week Centrale is hosting the Central MML Conference. Are we going to that, not going?
We are invited. I talked to Courtney about that a couple of days ago. No one had showed any interest, so we have not made any reservations.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. The last thing, this coming Saturday, the Kingdom Pilots Association is gonna have a breakfast out at the airport.
Pancake.
Pancake breakfast. It goes towards scholarships that they give out for student, essentially student pilots. For this year, they gave out three scholarships to local Civil Air Patrol wannabe people.
Michelle's son got one of them.
He sure did.
Really? Well, congratulations.
Yes, he did, congratulations.
So, you know, if you're interested in having a good breakfast, go on out. You can watch them dive bomb the, they have flower bags that are gonna drop for prizes and stuff.
Target practice.
Target practice.
Fun, fun stuff.
So, that's it.
Okay.
Very good. Cool, so where were we?
Here.
Okay, resolutions.
Okay.
Resolution thirty-three forty-two, if you would present that, Mrs. Reckle.
Yes, okay, let's see. Resolution, resolution number thirty-three forty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, state revolving funding program relating to the loans under the Missouri Clean Water, Clean Water Section 644 R S M O for the, for the wastewater treatment plant. I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-three forty-two at tonight's meeting.
Second. This is a simple housekeeping act?
Yeah.
A resolution, we have to let V N R know who, who we approve as being the signer. Because we have a new mayor, we need a new resolution.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question. Everything else we have passed says we authorize the mayor, but versus we authorize Leroy.
It says the mayor and then later on it says Mayor Leroy.
Oh, okay.
Lau can.
Lau, it says Lau.
Well.
It's in here, it's, yes, yeah.
Well, I know it's in here, but every other thing seems to be.
I, I'm on your page.
So this one is, this one's off of a model, so we get this from the state. Kyle got this from the state, so we have to adopt exactly what they give us.
Okay.
So that's kind of where this came from.
The state again, huh? Okay. Thank you.
Cool. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Oppose, no. That passes. Ordinances. Councilman Stone, thirteen, fifteen thirty-nine, please, first reading.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Before I do, I'll double check with the, with the clerk. The, is that Javiation?
It is Javiation.
Thank you. I want to make sure that I was pronouncing that correctly and it was spelled correctly.
Yes, Javiation.
I present bill number fifteen thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the airport consultant selection of Javiation and affirming the selection process met the Missouri Department of Transportation's requirements. I present bill number fifteen thirty-nine. I make a motion that bill number fifteen thirty-nine be approved for first reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion on this? This is somebody new that we're working with, or?
We tend to do that with airport engineers. It's required for a plate, we're to go through a selection every five years. And I don't think in twenty-three years, we've ever gone back to back with the same airport engineer.
We, yes, somebody new, we interviewed, we sent a RFQ out there, we got two of them. One was the last engineers that we had, Crawford, Merkin, and Tully. And the other one was Javiation. In that selection process, we had members of the Airport Advisory Board and Kingdom Pilot Association along with staff here in Thornton. So, after, after an interview process, Javiation was selected. They're out of Jefferson City, Missouri, and I have a lot of contacts, a lot of ex-employees from MoDOT, frankly. And so, you know, looking at, looking at their history of work, along with, along with their knowledge of MoDOT and FAA. It was pretty well unanimous, please, selection of. unanimous, please, selection of, of J-aviation.
Cool. Is there any questions, is there a discussion on that?
Just to clarify, Mr. Stone, you're moving it to second reading at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The dollar amount that's associated with, with that, do we, do we have?
Right now-
I don't see anything in that.
Right, right now, there, there isn't a dollar amount associated with it. Um, we, the selection's based, it's a professional service, it's based off qualifications.
And the FAA mandates that.
And the FAA mandates that, for sure. Um, and so, we're, as, as Bill mentioned earlier, anything we wanna do within the next five years that we wanna use or that we need an engineer for, uh, planning or environmental or design services, um, we need to have, have, have gone through this selection process. And, uh, upon us determining what that project might be, then a negotiation, uh, goes into how much, uh, we'll go into negotiation, J-aviation will say this is our cost, um, and also there'll be an independent cost, um, study done by a, by a firm looking at J-aviation's, uh, cost of services to see if, if that's a reputable cost or acceptable cost, and that's, that's also mandated by the FAA.
Thank you, Kyle.
I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Pass. Or advanced. Councilman Brown, uh, if you'd present 1540, please?
An ordinance, Bill number 1540, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an application for federal and state assistance for the Elton Hinsley Memorial Airport to assist the new, with new hangars in approving the city's local match not to exceed 10% of the projected cost. I make a motion to place Bill 1540 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to table this at this time.
Second.
Can I have a motion on the floor to table this? Is there any discussion?
Yes. Um, we have accrued a fairly good amount of money that's supposed to go to the airport. Um, come September, we're gonna lose a good chunk of that, just because the term of it expires.
Ninety-three thousand.
Yeah, something like that. Um-
We're, we're allowed to accrue, um, three, essentially three years, so, so 2016, uh, we used a little bit of our money. That's our last project at the airport was Runway 624, and, uh, we used a, a little bit of 2016's money. We get $150,000 a year from the federal government, um, so there's 93,000 of that 2016 money left over, and then if you add 150, uh, from 2017, 2018, 2019, um, you know, you get, you get, and then if you look at, ahead, if we did any, did something, did an actual construction in 2020, you could, you could see about $770,000, something in there.
I guess, I don't quite understand that math, Kyle. 150 even times four is 693, is 693,000, isn't it?
There, there's also a local match requirement of 10%, so if you add the 10% to it-
Yeah.
-you'll get up there.
So, um, we were looking at building new hangars out at the airport. There is supposedly a big waiting list for people to get hangars, but we're not sure if they're really wanting a hangar, or they've already got one. What, what I would propose is, we have some safety things we need to do out the airport, like for landing lights and such. They call them REILs.
Real lights.
Real.
Runway and, runway and indicator lights.
Yeah. We can start spending money to fix that, and in the meantime, engineering, uh, can look into the waiting list, how many people really want a hangar, how many people are willing to put money up front to reserve a hangar, to ensure that that hangar gets rented. The other thing I think we need to look at is, how much are we charging for rent?
We're giving it away.
It's not very expensive to rent a hangar, which is surprising.
Right, right, right now, the, generally our tee hangars are $156 a month.
Right.
I couldn't go to the lake and rent a boat slip for that.
Oh.
But, but I think we can still go to the state to look for 2020 money, we just haven't assigned it to build hangars yet. But in the interim, we need to check the, uh, waiting list, we need to check the cost structure we're, uh, giving everybody out at the airport to see if it's viable.
How many planes do we-
I'm not against tabling it, but I think, I'm more say we need to postpone it, but we need to do some things in the interim-
I agree.
-to set us up for success if we decide to build new hangars.
How many planes are currently at the airport, Kyle? Do you have that number?
There's about, right, right about 40.
Forty. And how old is that, is the list that says there's eight to 10?
Um, it's, I mean, kinda like that, it, it kinda, it fluctuates, you know, so, um, if, if, like, the, the other day, we had a, had somebody move out, boom, we had it filled within a couple of days. So, uh, you know, generally, generally speaking, uh, it holds about 10 to 12 boats. So, I think Ballard's point is, is good, and it's something that we've talked about, is that, you know, just because you have a waiting list doesn't mean that they're, they're gonna jump on a hangar, right? So what, uh, what level of commitment are, are you willing? One thing we talked about, we had an Airport Advisory, uh, Board meeting today, is one thing we talked about, okay, if you're really interested, uh, let's, you know, put down a deposit for a, a potential hangar up front to show your level of interest, and then maybe we'll see what kind of a waiting list, uh-
Do you, do you think, Kyle, in your own, in your own mind, would you finance something that's showing a negative as the airport is? Would you go out and finance a loan when you're showing a negative?
Talking about me, myself, at home?
Looking at the big picture, in the city, in the city itself, should we, and that's the way that I think we should look at it, is, there's a big deficit there, and finance something, because now when you add a new hangar, you have more maintenance, everything goes up with that, when you add a hangar, and the costs aren't, aren't there.
Yeah, they-
Also, another thing that I will mention, as I was looking online, right in the first paragraph of the airport website, it says that the fuel is not available at the, at the airport. I don't know whether that's true or not, um, but it does say that fuel is not available at the airport.
They've got some problems with the, the payment system and fuel delivery, but fuel is available.
Yeah.
Um, I know, I know.
Tell you what it says.
Um, that's one of the big draws, but we even talked about that this afternoon.
Right, but, uh, but back to your question, I think that's a, a good question that, that you posed, uh, you know, a good fiscally responsible question is, would you do that? Would you do it yourself? Um, you know, the, we get 90%, 90% is, is what the federal government commits to it.
True.
The reason why we were, the reason why we were even looking at that was because, uh, right now our pavement is, is in, uh, you know, a good position, uh, generally speaking, other than, other than the real lights, our, our, um, our lighting system and our general, um, our, our general, um, airport condition is in, is in good shape. And so, um, you know, that's really the only reason why, why we would even look to do that, and hangars do, uh, are the only thing that really generates, other than fuel generates money, and, and the hangars really generate more than fuel.
And I'm assuming, I mean, fuel doesn't generate that terribly much.
No. You're talking, you're talking in the order of, on hangars, and Kathy knows the numbers better than I do, but, you know, you're looking at probably $80,000 a year in hangars, um, and if you look over the course of time, uh, you know, our hangars generally are full. You know, if you look, if, if you look at budgets historically, we're anywhere from 80 to 85,000 dollars is what we're making off of, off of our hangars. And, and that's, you know, generally, that's, that's a full vote. Um, so, and, and fuel, you're looking, I'm gonna say around $60,000, you have it, have it in you, but it's on that.
Eighteen, eighteen was, eighty was the, fifty is what it ended up being, 50,000.
Right.
Of course it had to be all-
Is that sales, or is that sales over expenses?
That's revenue, that, that's what was budgeted.
But what was the expenses associated with that?
So there's nothing out there that, that needs repair?
So it's negative. There's a negative 10,000 right there.
The, the real lights.
Yeah, that, I understand that.
There is, we would, we would have to pair something with those real lights to, to, come up with, you know, to fulfill the 93, so we wouldn't lose that much.
Yes, exactly.
The fuel delivery system.
Right, or something, okay.
Now, the, the, you know, MoDOT, speaking with MoDOT, uh, every year, or, you know, pretty well every year, there are cities that, that don't spend all of their $150,000 entitlement.
I'm sure, yeah.
So, um, there is potential that if we did a larger project, that, 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 uh, you know, they're, they could potentially give us some, some money that was turned in, but not being a safety-related item, like hangars are not, hangars are not a safety-related item, it would go to the safety-related item or a runway item, uh, before, before we would get it, so.
Of course.
Um, you know, even, even, you know, to, to look at, you know, to look at, uh, even doing hangars, the cost, you know, a, a, anything airport, the cost is high, you know, you're looking, uh, the numbers given to us by J-aviation, you're looking at a million dollars, a little over a million dollars to, for, for six hangars.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, to, that, to us, that would be about $100,000, you know, at our current rate, that, that would take, uh, about nine years to, to pay back, and, you know, if we looked at, which we do need to look, you know, one of the action items that, that we have is to look at, look at our hangar rates, you know, even if, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, you know, we, we would need to look to, look to see what's around us and be competitive, but-
Around, yeah, exactly.
You know, if that jumped up to 200, then you're looking at a seven-year payoff.
Yeah.
So.
So what, when you say you're gonna table something?
It is table till next meeting.
Till the next meeting.
Okay.
It's still there.
That'll give Kyle some time to come up with some of these answers.
And that's fine, or do you need more time, or?
I, I think, uh, what I, one I need to present, okay, what is the cost around us on-
Right.
-hangar, right?
Right.
Uh, the other thing would be, along with the real lights, what would we pair with those real lights to, to get us up to that $93,000?
Fuel delivery.
Yeah, fuel delivery.
Cause I, I mean, I would hate to see us turn, you know, turn it around.
Right, I, I agree, we don't wanna lose it.
Right. I would not do that at home. You know? I know we just put some money into the fuel system, but is a new fuel system eligible?
Yeah.
The, uh, where we're at on the fuel system is that we've had, we've had, uh, our staff look at it, we have our IT person look at it, uh, we've had New Meyer come out and, uh, look at the card reader.
Yeah.
We've updated the software, um, and New Meyer believes that the card reader is fine. They think that, they potentially think that the phone line, if we replace the phone line with a network cable, that, uh, that that may fix the problem, so that's our next step in the game, is to replace, is to replace that and, and get on the phone with Fuel Master to see if there's any, if there's any dip switches or anything like that that need to be changed, uh, you know, if any setting needs to be changed, uh, on the Fuel Master system to, to make it operate with the new network cable. So, that's kinda where we're at.
Okay.
Right now, right now, you, if you swipe your card occasionally, you might have to swipe it three, four, or five times, it'll eventually go.
Oh, totally right.
It works, it just, it's just a pain in the butt.
We're at a loss, if we have 40 planes out there, we're projected, what are proposed for 2019 was, only $3,749.05 per airplane. So if I take that, we should raise their rates to $468 for that hangar, the 156 plus 312 divided.
So just to recap real quick, we have a motion on the table, I'm sorry, we have, yes, a motion on the table to table. Um, I think that we should probably act on that and then give Kyle an opportunity to look at his list and maybe some of those, to those rates, but we should definitely go ahead and act on the, the motion we have on the floor.
So, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of tabling this till at least
next meeting? Please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? All right, let's move on. Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Kyle, when you do your math, also look at the life of the hangar, not just the payback. I mean, if, if that hangar lasts 20 years, then you're looking at getting 20 years worth of income off it, and you don't just have to pay it back within a year. Thank you.
Bill number 1541, um, Mrs. Pastnok, if you would read that for us?
Yes. Bill number 1541 is amended, ordinance repealing Section 2-71, councillor to sign, city, uh, Fulton City Code, and enacting a new section and thereof. Make a motion to place Bill number 1541 as amended for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, so I know Councilwoman Pastnok said as amended, but I do wanna kinda point out to you guys some of those changes that are brought up. Um, basically, you're gonna see, we've added a Section 2 that just kinda reaffirms and ratifies everything we currently have on the books, and then you'll see that there is still a signature line for the city councillor on this amended, um, copy that I've provided to you. In order to kinda follow the protocol, if we could get a motion to amend the original agenda to make these changes in second, and we'll vote on that first.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion in second to amend the agenda?
Uh, to amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on that?
Courtney, since we hadn't presented it yet, it really, it, it does need to be amended.
Because we made changes less than 24 hours, we do need to amend it, just to kinda make sure we're following.
Because we included it in the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
That, that was the, the point of order, I was trying to understand.
Yep.
Decent question. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll oppose, no. So we can move forward with, uh-
The amended ordinance.
So, does your motion still stand, Councilwoman Pastnok as amended? Wonderful, so let's go ahead.
And I have a second.
Oh, and you have a second? Great, so we can go ahead and vote on the amended one now to move it to second reading at our next meeting?
Okay.
Keep it straight, yeah. All those in favor, say yes.
I gotta, I have one question. In Section 3, are we aware of any ordinances or parts of ordinances that would currently be in conflict with this?
Just kinda standard language in an ordinance, that, you'll, you'll notice that in every single ordinance we have, um, but basically, that's just kind of a, again, a housekeeping thing there, nothing specifically.
That's, that was my question, specifically on this one. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call for the question, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? That is passed. Okay, we're off to Bill number 1542, Councilman Moore, if you would present that, please.
Okay. Bill number 1542, an ordinance reclassified under the zoning ordinance, a .64 acre tract of land located immediately south of 2515 North Blue Street in Fulton, Missouri, establish effective date. I move this for, pass it for the second, next council meeting for second reading?
Second.
After some discussion, motion was offered by Ronald Danny and seconded by Ken McSwain to approve the zoning change request made for the tract- to approve the zoning change request made for the tract of land located at 2515 North Bluff Street and to recommend passage by the city council. Roll call vote of the members of the commission was followed. Mike Ible, yes. Les Hudson, yes. Pat Kelly, no. Ken McSwain, Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Jeremy Washington, yes. And Louis Bate, yes. Motion carried with seven members of the commission voting in favor and one member of Kelly opposed.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, can I ask, how do they, how do you even access your property? The property that you guys are currently located at?
Sure, we have a, a thing right wing that you're entering behind the current apartment buildings that are built.
So you're on the backside of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, it's zoned for retail, which I understand they don't have any setbacks, but the apartments like C2 would, would have setbacks.
Yes, C3 does, it has front setbacks, no side or rear. But C3 is planned commercial.
Right.
And so, to build the residential structures, he would have to go to a C2.
But currently, you could just build like a, a retail.
A commercial, a planned commercial building.
All the way up to the property room.
My, my comment, and I asked a couple of other questions while we were on break. I, I greatly understand your, your comment you made during open forum and respect it huge. But I don't think it's anything we can control. I think even as it's, as it's zoned now, someone could build a building that is sitting right on top of you. And even if we change it, they're at least going to be further away, but it's not going to change that. I, I don't think it's anything we can control at this point. And I'm sorry for that, but I don't think it can change what we're doing tonight. But I wanted to express my understanding.
I know one of the concerns was if, if the residential property is built, then there's a possibility of decks that are facing that private property for Card V and the potential, you know, lack of privacy. So that may or may not occur with a business. You know, you still have that possibility of losing that privacy. But I do understand the concern of having, you know, people just sitting out on their decks and watching on a wall.
Right. Too much.
I have that now. My neighbor behind me, their deck actually is taller than my finished.
Right.
So in the planning minutes that you gave us, it talks about building a fourplex?
Yes.
You're not talking the apartment complex that's already there, right? You're talking something, a single story?
It would be just south of it. It would basically mirror what's there. But as far as I know right now, he's planning on building a unit.
So this is on the table for being passed on to second reading. So there's still time to think about this, talk about this, if we feel differently down the road. Is there any more discussion tonight on this? I'll call for a question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
One more?
Yep.
That passes on. So we're moving on. Councilwoman Sebacher had to leave, so kindly, Councilman Stone will present 1538.
Should I get to the right one here? Present Bill Number 1538, an ordinance repealing Chapter 14 Animals, Fulton City Code enacting a new chapter in lieu thereof and establishing effective date. I make a motion to, for Bill Number 1538 to advance to second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Third reading at the next, yes?
Third, thank you.
You're fine.
Second reading, third reading at the next council meeting.
Your one moment of glory.
Yep. I had, I had one earlier.
Oh, okay.
And Councilwoman Pastnok, thank you.
So we've got a motion on the table. Is there any discussion on this? We did talk about this last meeting a little bit. Are there any other questions, concerns, comments? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right. Announcements, please.
All right, the MML Elected Annual, I'm sorry, Annual Elected Officials Conference will be held June 6th and 7th in Columbia. If you would like to attend that, I need to know no later than May 21st, preferably. If you could tell me tonight, that would be even better. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, May 28th at 6:30 PM. And the MML Annual Conference will be held September 8th through 11th in St. Charles. I have given you all sheets. If you can just make sure I get those back tonight, I would appreciate it.
I will be attending the Recon Business Expo, the one that Mary's done the last couple of, of years. And I leave on Saturday, returning on Thursday. So hopefully, we'll come out back with some, some really good opportunities for retail.
So before we check out of here, I did have Councilwoman Pastnok agree to be our liaison for the P&amp;Z board. Thank you for that. And Mr. Simmons on the airport, the advisory board. So thank you for that. And again, the airport breakfast is Saturday. Go get a pancake. I'll call for the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Let's do it.